Let's slide a meeting of Chillicothe City Council to order. Rule call, Mr. Clerk?
Truttle.
Here.
Tattman.
Here.
Sebel.
Here.
Prohl.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Ames.
Here.
Okay, I'd like everybody to rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the journal minutes were in your packet. Did the clerk pass out to us? Ms. Gray?
I have a correction under the Human Resources Committee of the committee report. Mrs. Huffman should be changed to Ms. Hoffman.
Do I have a second to change Mr. Bonner's seconds?
No. We can take that as a motion to approve, subject to the correction.
Okay. Motion to approve. Okay, rule call?
Truttle.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Minutes are approved with the correction. Thank you, Ms. Gray, for finding that. Reports of committees. Ms. Gray?
The Human Resources Committee has two items on the agenda this evening. Item number two, which is the second reading on the ordinance to appropriate $4,500 to cover salary costs for a full-time general laborer position within the refuse department for the remainder of 2013. At the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule. And item number three, the second reading on the ordinance to amend Section 123.072 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, titled Transit Department Personnel as Amended. And at the appropriate time, I will ask council to waive the three-read rule.
Ms. Gray, you do need to make a motion to amend item three by substitution.
Okay, so I make that motion at this time.
Okay, do I have a second, Mrs. Patrick? Rule call to amend item number three by substitution?
Truttle.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Motion, thanks, and we have the amended version of item number three? Any other reports of committees? Mrs. Patrick?
Thank you, President Reinhart. The Utilities Committee has no items on tonight's agenda. However, I'd like to report on some outstanding committee assignments. Number thirteen dash fifty was considering making changes to the nuisance abatement process, which would event shortening the time period, allowing the billing of the property owner immediately after the work has been done by the city, and make use of a collection agency before placing lien on the property taxes. A series of questions was sent to the Law Director's office regarding these changes, and we're still waiting on some answers. Item number thirteen dash one thirty-two is updating sewer use ordinance, adding penalties for tax, oils, and grease. This assignment has resulted in rewriting of Chapters nine, twelve, and nine eleven. In Chapter nine, twelve, wastewater collection and treatment systems, some of the sections of this chapter date back to January nineteen eighty-five. That's twenty-eight years. And the updating of Chapter nine, eleven, sewer regulations, these sections, some of them date back to November of nineteen fifty-nine. That's fifty-four years. So, Richard Johnson, the Utilities Director, is working on getting those revised, and I expect this to be finished by, hopefully, the end of February. It's a rather involved process. I would also like to report on assignment number thirteen dash forty-seven. It's the Council's Special Meth Lab Committee, created to investigate the meth lab issues in the city, propose legislation. The committee has proposed legislation that has been reviewed by the Law Director. Changes have been made to that proposed legislation. Now, the committee is waiting on the mayor to decide which department he wants to handle the enforcement and the paperwork involved. I'm asking that all three assignments be carried over for next year. I would also like to announce that for, under Utilities, online bill payments can be made starting January second of 2014. You need to go to the city's website at CI.chillicothe.oh.us and click on the Utilities webpage link, and it will take you to that section. And for Transit, I would like to announce that there will be a Christmas food drive, Saturday, December fourteenth, from nine AM to three PM. It's just a drive-through. You can drop off your food at the Transit Center at the corner of East Seventh and Watson Street. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Bonner?
I thank you, President Reinhart. The City Services has one item on the agenda tonight. It's the first reading to appropriate $2,600 to pay PANDA, Environmental, for landfill inspection they performed on the city behalf. As all of us know, some of us better know that this landfill closure thing has gone on forever and has been quite expensive for the city. This year, we're actually having two inspections. PANDA is going to take over from here. Hopefully, they're less than our cost for the final, about five years of closure of this landfill. So, we didn't have quite enough money set aside, thanks to the auditor. He really went in there and his staff were targeting this to get it down to $2,600 that we need, so we will not be touching the general fund at this important time of year with the general fund being so low. So, at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive this so we can get this taken care of before the end of the year, as PANDA did to perform this inspection quite some time ago, I believe it is. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Mr. Prohl?
Safety Services Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item number one, which is the third reading, is an ordinance amending Chapter one thousand five hundred and one point oh-one of the Codified Ordinances of Chillicothe pertaining to the enforcement of the Ohio Fire Code. What this will do, it changes our wording so that it should read that enforcement of the most recent fire code from the state and shall not include a set year. It also includes recommended requirements for water flow in new construction and requirements for fire access roads in new construction. And it's a third reading, so I appreciate your favorable vote on that tonight. Item number four is also in the Safety Services Committee. It is ordinance authorizing the transfer of safety service, or safety levy capital funds from the city's safety, for the city's safety service vehicle note payment. And so that we can move on this, I'm going to ask at the appropriate time that we waive the three-read rule. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prohl. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Chapman?
Yes, Engineering Committee does not have anything on the agenda tonight, but I do have six assignments I did not complete in 2013. Thirteen one eighteen, ODOT project for Western Avenue Route Fifty between Stan Hope and Cortland. Thirteen dash one nineteen, request for legislation to provide dedicated parking spaces for city and county employees. Thirteen dash one twenty, request to possibly return Second Street to two-way. Thirteen dash seventy-nine, request to allow Running Fox, which is now Rivers Edge Golf Course, to place a sign in the city right-of-way on Bridge and Pawnee. Thirteen dash one twenty-one, request to address the bench signs on Bridge Street and Main, develop legislation to control signage on the city's right-of-way. And thirteen dash one forty-one, request for legislation to approve an ODOT's project, nine seven one seven eight, to widen intersection at Limestone and St. Andrews Boulevard. All of these will be placed out of committee and addressed in two thousand and fourteen. I am waiting for much-needed information on all these items or assignments, and I could not have committee meetings without the requested information. I did have, however, get information on assignment thirteen dash one eighteen from an article in the December sixth Chillicothe Gazette. Apparently, ODOT is going forward with the project, and the local match is forty thousand to begin in two sixteen, two thousand and sixteen. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman? Any other reports of committees? Okay, reports of officials. Mayor Yurczen?
Thank you, President Reinhart. First of all, regarding the budget, the auditor and I continue to work on that. We have some final wrap-up items to get together with the general fund. We have meetings going to be taking place this week with official part discussions with municipal court. They're the ones that are the remaining ones out of the general fund. And then we also have to have a meeting with Richard Johnson regarding the Water Department and shortcomings that we found in issue in revenue with the water billing. So, we need to get some clarification with that. Also, the cutoff for December purchasing of last Wednesday makes late the information of where we'll end up with our carryover and cutting off the departmental spending. So, what I'd like to do is call a meeting next Monday and have a budget presentation at that time, and then hopefully, we can get the budget approved at our December twenty-third meeting. Secondly, the last fall, we hired the services of Clemens Nelson and Associates to help us with some of our union issues that we had on the table. One of those was an arbitration case with GFOP, which was, determination was rendered last week in the city's favor. And we initially made a request for appropriation of funds for the Clemens Nelson work of twenty thousand dollars for the year. Just the regular time back pay that was at stake with that arbitration, which they did a skillful job in handling that arbitration case, was twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. So, that one instance of successfully defending us in an arbitration more than paid for the cost of doing this with them for an entire year. With that financial number, no overtime, vacation, holiday pay, sick pay for personal time was factored into that number. That was just regular hours that we would have had to back pay for sergeants. Finally, as we go into the new year, we are going to have new health insurance. United Healthcare will be our insurance company. And I would like to bring to council's attention that if you're currently on a PPO plan, I would strongly urge you to take a look at the HSA plan. The difference in cost to the city for a single plan is thirty-two hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents a person. And for a family plan is nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents. That's just a difference of cost to the city. And in reality, there's more avenues that the coverage is better with an HSA plan than there is a PPO plan. So, if you're on a PPO, I'd strongly urge you to call Tammy Bockert and get the information on an HSA account and how that will or will not look for you and take that under consideration. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Yurczen. Honored if you may?
Thank you, President Reinhart. Just touch on two items tonight's agenda. Item four is just a transfer of money related to appropriation we did earlier in the year to pay for some vehicle repairs out of safety levy capital. When we made the change to the note payment for the armored vehicle, we actually increased the unappropriated balance in this fund, so we're not actually spending any more by making this payment. It's just a payment that's come due. We need to make sure we cover it. And I would encourage your passage of that item tonight. And then, item number five is the item that Councilman Bonner touched on. And I just want to explain what happened there. The original legislation request was for an amount of seventeen thousand dollars. This particular fund didn't have that balance in unappropriated, which means we would have had to go to the general fund for about ten thousand dollars. When we did some digging, it turned out that the invoice itself was under seven thousand dollars, so the request was a little high. And diligence of the Engineering Department kind of was able to move some money around as well to cover some costs. There's still some money left on the PO purchase order, and they were able to move from another line. So, we were able to work that down. There's a lot of back and forth between Councilman Bonner, as well as Theresa from the Law Director's office. I appreciate everybody's help on this, but particularly at this time of year, it's really inch and penny, so it was nice to be able to save there. I just appreciate everybody's help on that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Honored if you may. Lord Lieutenant Rutherford?
Thank you, President. I don't really have a report for this evening.
Thank you. All right. Reports from the chair. The guys' committee assignments are trickling in to me as we close out the year. I do need to get full reports from each committee chair and the status of them. I did kind of a cross-check of, out of the hundred and, I think, forty-three committee assignments we made, there's about, well, there's less than twenty that either we've missed in the process of, it's been reported out of committee and I didn't catch that, or what have you. So, that's pretty good. And a lot of the things that are kind of outstanding, like Mr. Tattman was talking about, are a little bit longer-term projects that we know we're just going to need to roll over. So, I'll be sending out a list of the ones to all of you guys that I've got. Let me know if they're still active. If not, as a basis, if we roll into the new term of council next year. We'll make sure these get reassigned, you know, pretty much immediately, but all outstanding committee assignments, once this term of council is over. They kind of die on the vine, so I just want to make sure our transition into next year, the work keeps moving forward and what have you. Want to make a brief comment on, thank the city crews, Jack, over the weekend of getting, doing a good job of getting the snow and ice off of, especially the main thoroughfares. I left out of town Saturday morning, unfortunately, to go see our Buckeyes lose in Indy, and then came home and a snowstorm kind of won the way home. And again, once I got to, both leaving town and got to town, again, the main thoroughfares, the hills, and as bad as the weather was, the crews obviously did a good job busting their tails to keep us safe and to keep the main thoroughfares up and running. And that's all I have to report.
Just to comment on that, talking to Safety Director Green with the situation of the snowstorm, the time that it hit was right about when people were getting out of work. And that clogged up traffic trying to get on the snowplows to the designated routes, and some of the hills didn't get done in the time that we would have liked them to get there. But they did pre-treat the roads with salt, and it just came down so hard and so much that the salt was ineffective. So, we talked about that today and try and get it better next time.
Well, I, you know, again, I saw the roads leave in town the next morning. I know, obviously, that night might have not been ideal, but by the time I left town Saturday morning, leaving out of town, you know, your main thoroughfares in the storm, I guess what you, you know, the side streets are going to be, and everything froze over. But I, you know, we're never going to have a perfect scenario with that, but I put the crews, obviously, in a short amount of time, did a good job. I guess I'm not a road maintenance expert, but...
Time is worth, because the snow hit two hours after they got off work, kept it working the whole day.
Yeah.
Hats off to the crew.
Absolutely. Next, audience participation. Any member of the audience wish to address council? Please step up to the podium. Give your name and address for the clerk. Any members of the audience? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Old business. Council members have any old business they would like to bring forward? Mrs. Gray?
Under old business in our last meeting, we talked about city council chambers. And I know that we've had some variety of discussions on what we were going to do in moving forward. And I know that I talked with John Saxton at Chillicothe City Schools, who said that if we so need your facilities temporarily or however we need it, to let them know they are willing to allow us to have our meetings there until we can come to a complete decision. But I'd just be able to present that to you and let you know.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Patrick?
Just two things for a quick. As you all know, we started collections of the length of water bills back in August. And we had, at that time, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, forty-five dollars and thirty cents that they were trying to collect. And we've gone through a collection agency, and they've collected a grand total of two thousand, two hundred, thirty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. So, evidently, we need to approach this in a different manner. If anybody has any suggestions, please let me know. And I had to agree with Mrs. Gray about maybe looking into doing something about council chambers, because the money we're spending just keeps us, why don't we just mothball it, find someplace else to meet, and use that money we save from other police officers? That'd be my suggestion. But since the mayor's going to be meeting with the courts, you know, we need a key to the building.
We talked about that on our way out last night, didn't we?
Yeah. I can actually see you guys shivering, because I missed the last meeting, and I watched it on YouTube, and you looked very cold. It was very cold.
We were very cold.
Miss Neil?
As much as I hate being cold, and I write about it more than anybody, I just think for us to move out of this building is a wrong signal. We're trying to get downtown building owners to invest in their property, and for us to just abandon this is, I believe, kind of hit critical. So, what I would prefer to see is that we not rent space out from other buildings. And I'd like to see us pursue getting renters in this building. And that way, we could make some of the updates needed. We could keep it, keep the utilities on, because the minute you abandon this building, you turn off the utilities, it becomes an abandoned property. And I don't think that's what we want to do in downtown. I think it's sending the wrong message.
Thank you, Mrs. Neil. Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhart. I agree with Mrs. Neal. I think that this is where city council needs to be, in the heart of the city. Apologize for the cold meeting last time. I was out of town. Mr. Truttle was out of town. Mr. Reinhart was out of town. Anybody who had keys to get in was out of town, and that's why we didn't get the heat on. That will not happen again, as evidenced by this, and I will make other arrangements. What Mrs. Neal said, the fire department has told us that once we vacate this building, and once this building is no longer used, it will just be a very short matter of time till the whole building deteriorates. And then we will have an empty building, abandoned building, sitting in the middle of town. And I don't think we want to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Any other old business?
I just got a text message from Mike Green. Melissa Givens is on the way with the winners of the decorating contest. So, she should be here shortly.
Okay, we will make a special exception if she wants to present those to us here. Absolutely. Bring some fun to the meeting. It's boring as some of our stuff can be. No, that's good. Any other old business? All right.
Oh, there she is.
Okay.
I just announced you. You can go, and that's all you can.
We don't want the police to give you a ticket.
Thank you, Mrs. Givens. Melissa Givens had a tweet that just gave me the winners for the first, second, and third place for the decorating contest. In third place for the residential is Kathy and John Zangri at three thirty, Pye Avenue, second ward. Yay!
What was that last name, please?
Zangri, Z-A-N-G-R-I.
Thank you.
Second place on three forty-five Plyley's Lane, Heath and Heather Helderbrand. That's in first ward. Yay! And first place on eight twelve Eastern Avenue is Alan Clark.
It's the Patrick Six Ward.
In the business decorating, the third place goes to Coffee Central at Central Center. Second place goes to Sweet William Blossom Boutique on Second Street, Annie Frizzell. And third, first place goes to Suzie's Gifts on Main Street, Lou Jones, Suzie and Lou Jones.
Very good.
Mrs. Ames, could I ask you to repeat the second-place winner?
On the business?
Yes.
Sweet William Blossom Boutique.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you have any correspondence or petitions?
I have none tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, new business. Any council members have any new business they would like to bring forward?
End of year.
Okay, very good. Committee assignments and meeting days. Now, I have to pull this up on my new phone here, so give me a second. Okay. Since our last legislative meeting, we've made three committee assignments. We tell the years winding down, and the mayor's not quite keeping us as busy, or the auditor, as in the middle of the year. So, we've had three committee assignments. Thirteen dash one forty-one to the Engineering Committee, a request for legislation approving ODOT project PID nine seven one seven eight to widen intersections of US Route Fifty at Limestone and St. Andrews Boulevard, install turn lanes, upgrade traffic signals, access management were feasible, and improving turn radius at Limestone and St. Andrews. And Mr. Tattman just reported the shortness of the finish of the year. We will just roll that into a new Engineering Committee assignment in two thousand and fourteen. Thirteen dash one forty-two to the Safety Services Committee, request for legislation to appropriate twenty-four thousand dollars to safety levy capital. Principal note from unappropriated safety levy capital. And I have to tell you, Mr. Prohl had about the quickest turnaround on a committee assignment I've ever... And we've had some quick ones. Nancy did some quick ones. Mr. Patrick, Jeremy's sent some finance ones around pretty quick, but I sent that out late, what, a few nights, like Wednesday or Tuesday night, and it was in my inbox, a copy of the request, by like six AM. So, good job, Dustin. And last but not least, one forty, thirteen dash one forty-three to the Community Affairs Committee, a request for legislation to authorize the city to enter a contract with the Ross County Commissioners for indigent defense. And that's all we have. All right, you guys ready for legislation? All right, let's go. Mr. Clerk, first, item number one.
Third reading of an ordinance amending Chapter fifteen oh one point zero one of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Look for the discussion. Rule call?
Truttle.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Okay, that motion adopted. The ordinance is passed. Item number two, second reading of an ordinance appropriating four thousand, five hundred dollars to cover the salary costs for a full-time general laborer position within the refuse department for the remainder of 2013, and declaring an emergency, second reading. Ms. Gray?
At this time, I'd request that council waive the three-read rule.
That motion is seconded by Mrs. Ames to waive the rules. Rule call on motion to suspend the rules?
Truttle.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Rule call on the ordinance.
Truttle.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Okay, that motion's adopted. The ordinance is passed. Item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance amending Section one twenty-three point zero seven two of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, titled Transit Department Personnel and Declaring Emergency, second reading.
Ms. Gray?
I request that council waive the three-read rule, please.
Seconded by Mrs. Ames. Rule call on the motion to suspend the rules?
Truttle.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Rule call on the ordinance.
Truttle.
Yes.
Tattman.[1718.75]
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of safety levy capital funds for the city's safety vehicle note payment and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Mr. Pearl?
At this time, I'd ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call to suspend the rules?
Tratchell.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Okay, the rules will be suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yeah, motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty-six hundred dollars to pay PANDA Environmental for a landfill inspection they performed on the city's behalf and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bonner?
Yes, for reasons stated earlier, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
Okay, that'll be seconded by Mrs. Neal. Roll call to suspend the rules?
Tratchell.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.